Twenty-fifth meeting of the Livermore City Council, I called meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barry Antos?
Here.
Councilmember Branning?
Here.
Councilmember Kik?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carling?
Here.
Mayor Marshawn?
Here. Shall please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its form.
Thank you. Okay, next we're going to move on to three point one, which is proclamations and presentations. We're going to confirm the advisory body appointments to the Airport Commission, Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District, Board of Trustees, Beautification Committee. It shows it's on. The green light's on. Yep, okay, I'll just talk louder and stand closer. All right. With that, we have the appointments are for the Historic Preservation Commission. We have two vacancies appointing Fred Cullum and Neil Pan for Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District Board of Trustees. We have a nomination of Maya Manoharan, Commission for the Arts, Thomason Dewhurst, Livermore Airport Commission, David Farley, Livermore Library Board of Trustees, Richard Hunt, Beautification Committee, Kat Weiss and Anne Brown and Andrew Wong. Also appointments to an unexpired and regular term, Ron Kraft and Tom Bradley and story, city historian Alan Frank. I'd ask for a, let's see, any council questions? Any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay. Very good, I would entertain a motion for approval.
A motion of approval.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Carling, second by Councilmember Kik. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimously, thank you very much. Moving on to a proclamation declaring March-
Mayor? I'm sorry, I need to administer the oath.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Since they're all here. Alan, good to see you. Yeah, if you'd be so kind as to administer the oath of office. My goodness, thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you for stepping up and volunteering your time. And thank you all for volunteering your time. It's people like you that that make and keep Livermore the remarkable place that it is is because you give the most valuable thing that you have, and that's your time. And back to the community, so thank you all.
Mr. Kraft? Ms. Weiss? I need a shorter name. Thank you. Ms. Dewhurst? Mr. Cullen? Mr. Pan? Red? Mr. Wang? And city historian, Mr. Frank?
All right, and sorry she just ducked out, but to demonstrate Ms. Dewhurst's chops for the art commission, she's the one that did that remarkable mural of the Western Pacific Railroad Depot next to a common point on North Livermore Avenue, so it's a beautiful mural. So we've got a lot of very talented people stepping up to serve in our commissions. Okay, now we'll go to the proclamation three point two declaring March twenty twenty four as March for Meals, Pound Save Lunch Month. And this will be presented to Carrie Old's Spectrum Meals on Wheels Program Manager. And declaring March for Meals, March twenty twenty four. Whereas on March twenty second nineteen seventy-two, President Richard Nixon amended the Older Americans Act of nineteen sixty-five, establishing a national nutrition program for seniors sixty and older. And whereas twenty-two years ago Meals on Wheels America initiated the March for Meals, Pound Save Lunch campaign to recognize and raise awareness about the escalating problem of senior hunger in America. And whereas in partnership with Stanford Healthcare Tri-Valley, the Spectrum Community Services Meals on Wheels Program in Livermore has served the community admirably for over thirty years, delivering over thirty-four thousand nutritious meals to more than two hundred fifty homebound seniors last year alone. Stanford Healthcare Tri-Valley's menu is a model for Meals on Wheels programs nationwide, meeting the specialized dietary requirements of older adults in Livermore. And whereas the dedicated volunteers of the Spectrum Community Services Meals on Wheels Program have served over fifteen hundred hours each year in Livermore and are the backbone of the program, providing not only nutritious meals, but also caring concern and attention to seniors and individuals with disabilities at significant risk of hunger and isolation. And whereas the Spectrum Community Services Meals on Wheels Program helps seniors maintain health and independence, preventing unnecessary falls, hospitalizations, and premature institutionalization, and provides a powerful socialization opportunity for millions, including Livermore seniors combating the negative health effects and economic consequences of loneliness and isolation. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Livermore proclaims March twenty twenty four as the twenty-second annual March for Meals and urges residents to take this month to volunteer, donate and honor the Meals on Wheels programs, the seniors they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. Furthermore, the City Council thanks staff and volunteers of Spectrum Community Services in their efforts to combat senior hunger and isolation in Livermore and the Tri-Valley. Sent this to Carrie Olds?
And Vice Mayor and Mayor Marshawn, especially for those who come out this week or last week to save in the March for Meals. This year Meals on Wheels America has moved to change it to Save Lunch because we really are talking about getting that lunch to our seniors. When you talk about a march, you think we're getting out walking. We're not doing that, but we are making sure that our seniors are fed. And the statistic that was given was strictly for Livermore. Through the Tri-Valley, we do serve in all three cities. Through the Tri-Valley, we served seventy thousand meals last year and over five hundred clients between the cities. We go five days a week, which is much more than many of the other organizations across the nation are able to do. We knock five days for those that need it, we provide seven meals. And at the door, we are doing not just a handoff of a meal, but we're making sure that our seniors are safe. Whether it be that we call their emergency contact, whether we need to make an APS report, whether we just need to help them find the resources that they need in order to stay in their home and age with dignity. It is with ninety volunteers a week that we serve over fifteen hundred meals a week to the Tri-Valley. And but there is much more need for that. We are doing what we can with what funds we have available. We work very hard to do fundraising to make sure that we can continue to do so. No senior that needs the meal is turned away regardless of their ability to help pay for that meal. We will go out and raise the funds where we need to in order to make sure that our seniors are taken care of. So I want to thank you for the proclamation. Anyone that wants to come out and volunteer can reach out to me at our volunteer website or volunteer email, M O W at spectrumcs.org. Or you can join us at our website, again, spectrumcs.org. And there's a volunteer button, there's a donate button, and there's more information to be found there. I want to thank you again. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, yes. Comment from Councilmember Kik.
Yeah, so for my day job, I was researching the O A A title services and discovered that of all the Older Americans Act programs that receive funding, fifty-six percent of that is volunteer labor. So any program that goes out, the majority is volunteer labor. So just thank you for organizing those volunteers and just goes again to show how important it is when people give their time. So I thought that was quite interesting.
Very important. Do you have the comments?
Carrie mentioned I was out last week and it's a very impressive organization and well-run. I was quite impressed. I mean, I went out on one of the routes one afternoon or morning, I guess it was, but to deliver to roughly twenty people with a woman named Inez, who does this every week. So I was out there just briefly to see what they do, but it is a tremendous organization. And if anybody's interested in either volunteering or donating, please do because it's a wonderful program. Lots of people in need. I think the city manager went out too, didn't you go out as well? Yeah, that's what I thought, so. It's okay, Carrie, it's okay. Anyway, thanks Carrie for all you do and it's it's a great thing that we have for this community, thanks.
Well, and those meals are tailored to the individuals, they're vegetarian, they're vegan. There was a really great looking seafood salad in the group that I was delivering, so. But they're all tailored meals and it's the amount of care that goes into that is really quite remarkable. All right, moving on to the open forum, the, if you ask the city clerk, how can people participate in the open forum?
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the City Council in the following ways. For non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during open forum to address the City Council on any item of interest that is within the City Council's subject matter jurisdiction. For agendized items, the public can address the City Council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the City Council and the City Council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comments when a council member believes it's relevant to a particular business item. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person per item. For consent calendar items, one comment may be given for the entire consent calendar. If consent calendar items are pulled for discussion by the City Council, a speaker will be allowed one comment on the items pulled for discussion and a separate comment for the remaining consent calendar. To provide comment, please fill out and turn in a speaker card found at the entrance of the City Council chambers. Speakers will be announced in the order received. Once the public comment opens, each petition, participants' names will be announced and their three minutes will begin once at the lectern. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll take comments for thirty minutes and then if they go beyond that, we'll move it back to the end of the meeting. Okay, first speakers.
The first speaker is David McWigan, followed by Donna Kabane, followed by Eli Robles.
Signed my statement and was left to wait leaning on the hood of my truck until the supervisor came to release the scene. Leaning there, I started to get a chill, so I went around to the passenger door, opened it up and put on the coat that was on the seat over the lighter coat that I had bought earlier that day at Dom's. As I closed the door, I noticed how close my wheels were to the crosswalk line. So I got down there in a catcher spot like this to get a closer look. My first thought was dang, missed it by half the width of the line. That's because my truck pushed about half of the width over the line into the crosswalk. Then as I turned my head around the side of the bumper and looked at the curve, I guess it was really more like two-thirds, but still. The reason I know with one hundred percent accuracy that my truck ended up at approximately twenty inches into the crosswalk is that I got down and looked at it up close and personal for ten to fifteen seconds. And since I have a picture of a skid mark that the Livermore Police somehow lost, it's clear you are deliberately lying again to cover up crimes committed by the Livermore Police, just like you did for Officer Black. Now, some people have asked, why would the Livermore Police go to such extremes? Thinking that not knowing the motive somehow indicates that the police wouldn't do it. Well, back in the day before social media, there was an email chin that came around. Do you think like a psychopath? One simple question, a man goes to a funeral, he meets a woman there and finds it interesting. The next day, he goes out to kill someone who was also at the funeral. Why? Now I'll admit, I didn't know the answer and had to scroll down to the bottom. For those interested, the man was hoping to see the woman again at the next funeral. But the only thing proven by not knowing his motivation is that you don't think like a psychopath, which is a good thing. The proper question is not why would, but why did the Livermore Police go to such extremes? And it's really not that complicated. The arresting officer failed to follow procedures and created a big hole in the timeline. Then the officer parking my truck forgot to release the parking brake and accidentally corrupted the skid mark evidence. Their mistakes were causing the case to fall apart rapidly, so they decided to fix it. And since you've made it abundantly clear that you encourage the police to fix things by your willful cover-up of their crimes, there isn't a deterrent in Livermore, one might expect. Now, in the same way, I can intellectually understand the psychopath killing another person at the funeral, I can intellectually understand your willing cover-up of perjury and evidence tampering. The ends always justify the means, right Johnny? But I do not understand your cover-up of sexual assault and the promotion of chief, or true chief of the man most responsible for that cover-up. Just what ends are you justifying Johnny? Clearly, I do not think like you Johnny, and that's a good thing. You're a lying corrupt criminal Johnny, and people are starting to find out.
The next speaker is Donna Kabane, followed by Eli Robles, followed by Marty Sutton.
Good evening. Why don't we have unleaded aviation fuel at Livermore Airport? What is causing the delays? This is an urgent public health and safety issue. The negative impacts of lead in humans are well documented. A four-year-old who lived near L V K tested positive for lead in his blood. We need to act now. At least ten municipal airports in California and thirty-five airports nationwide offer U L ninety-four. Hayward, the other municipal airport in Alameda County, has two F B Os and both offer U L ninety-four. How did all of these airports get U L ninety-four before us? Why are we last? The city manager says the air board still requires a thirty-day comment period, but this can be waived for health issues. It is critical for council members to directly email Ms. Becky Yu at the air board and ask to have the permit fast-tracked. Start, please start selling U L ninety-four in the existing one thousand gallon fuel tank. The city can separate the fuel contract with the F B O and require him to sell unleaded A V fuel. Please provide updates concerning GAMI one hundred, a drop-in fuel the FAA certified and authorized in March. It can be used in any tank or aircraft. The city says on Facebook and Nextdoor, the staff is working to get unleaded fuel and is in contact with GAMI. But the city does not provide the public with any concrete steps. Please verify if Livermore is in negotiations with GAMI distributors to receive G one hundred U L. The timeline to transition to unleaded A V fuel must be accelerated. The council should consider the following steps. One, require the F B O to initiate a contract with G one hundred U L distributors in California. The city will recoup two hundred thousand dollars from Elevation L V K Cafe. Please consider using this money to buy an eighty-five hundred gallon A V tank for G one hundred U L. The benefits of offering unleaded fuel will reduce, A, the lead poisoning of residents, and B, allow piston aircraft to have a future at L V K. Please agendize updates on getting unleaded A V fuel for the next city council meeting. Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Eli Robles, followed by Marty Sutton.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and community members. My name is Eli Robles and I'm a union carpenter. I'm here tonight to implore upon you the need to insert language when projects come before you to include area standard wages as provided by our local unions. As long as, along with area standard wages, unions also provide apprenticeship programs that let you earn while you learn a new trade. Also, as a union member, they will, they will be afforded benefits for themselves and family members, thus not causing a burden on the, on county and state governments. This, along with local higher provisions, will ensure that these hardworking folks are also part of our community and not sitting in traffic and adding to our commute and pollution. Unfortunately, on the other side of the coin, it only takes a short drive to notice the biggest developers in town not offering area standard wages, training or benefits, should they be injured on the job. And really don't care where these workers come from as long as it is done fast and cheap. Not only are they cheating the workers, but also cheating the community. Since the community, since the quality of the projects they leave in our neighborhoods will not be of the same quality if they are not being trained. In short, as a twenty-three-year, twenty-three-year union member, through the ups and downs in the economy, I've been able to purchase my own home and provide for my family, working hard every day. So I ask of you to help us build not just buildings, but also stronger communities for all of us with these provisions. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Marty Sutton.
Good evening. My name is Marty Sutton and I'm the board chair for Tri-Valley Nonprofit Alliance. Tri-Valley Nonprofit Alliance is proud that this month we are celebrating our ten-year anniversary. Founded in two thousand and fourteen, we are a five oh one C three nonprofit with a mission to provide advocacy, collaboration and education to strengthen the nonprofit organizations enriching our communities. On March fourteenth, we hosted the mayor's panel with the five Tri-Valley mayors. Thank you to Mayor Marshawn for participating in this panel and also for acknowledging Kathy Young, Moni Knop and Tri-Valley Nonprofits' ten-year anniversary. I also want to thank you Vice Mayor Carling and Councilmember Barry Antos for also attending that event. We also have two big events coming up in May. Our first one is on May second. The TV N P A will be hosting the Anti-Poverty Collaborative Forum on Housing in the Tri-Valley. This event is a free event and will be held at the Bankhead Theater from ten to twelve in the morning and is read, and you can register at tvnpa.org. Again, that is a free event. And all members of the community are invited. On May fifteenth, we have our big event, which is Dan Palota is screening his documentary titled Uncharitable. This thought-provoking documentary is directed by Stephen, Stephen Gyllenhaal, sorry, and narrated by Dan Palota. After the film, we will sit down with Dan and talk about a new approach to philanthropy. The screening of Uncharitable and discussions isn't just for nonprofits. This event is for everyone that wants to have an impact in our community. The nonprofit sector has significant challenges that is, and there's an urgent need for change, not only in how we fund nonprofits, but also how we support our nonprofit employees. They all deserve a living rate, wage, and they should not be trying to work for free. If you want to be a part of this dynamic and positive change in philanthropy, philanthropy, please join us on May fifteenth at the Bankhead Theater at five P M. We have, right now have an early bird pricing of one oh five per person for TV N P A non-members and eighty-five dollars for members. This pricing ends April twelfth, and then after that, the prices will go up. We're asking everybody in the community to please attend this event. You can learn more about TV N P A and all of our community programs at tvnpa.org. Thank you. And I gave City Council members invitations to all this, I hope you will, thank you. I hope you will attend, this is so important, we need to support our providers and we need to look at how we fund our nonprofits, we need to change how we do it, thank you.
And that concludes open forum.
Very good, thank you. Okay, moving on to consent calendar, these are items that are typically routine in nature and usually passed with a single boat. Well, let me, let me back up just a moment here. So there was a question, what's causing the delay in, in the sale of unleaded fuel? Now, they mentioned that the thirty-day requirement or the sixty-day requirement from Bay Area Quality Management District could be, could be waived, but they have not done that, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, this is your city manager, Mariana Marshawn. No, they have not done that, we're still, as a matter of fact, waiting to hear back from the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, we're checking almost daily, waiting for the final confirmation of the tank recertification as well as the appropriate process.
So we're waiting on them. Also, there was the idea that the fuels, it was almost, I misunderstood that the fuels were interchangeable, that there were fuels that could be used in unleaded planes that could burn unleaded or also, you know, leaded. Now, the GAMI is the only one that's, that's interchangeable, the drop-in replacement. But the, if a plane is required to use leaded fuel, it cannot burn unleaded fuel unless it has both the engine and the frame certified to, to run unleaded fuel. And that certification can run about a thousand dollars. I had actually suggested to the Bay Area Air Quality Management District that if they wanted to incentivize pilots to be able to burn unleaded fuel, that they could perhaps provide grants to, to the pilots so that they would be able to transition. Unfortunately, we've heard nothing from the Bay Area Air Quality Management District on that either. But this is a requirement from the Federal Aviation Administration. There's been a lot of talk back and forth between the EPA and some of the air quality jurisdictions. But they're not the ones that require the fuels, that's the FAA. And the FAA really needs to be brought into this discussion. Is the, and I keep hearing about this four-year-old that tested positive for lead. The Center for Environmental Health has determined the number one cause of lead poisoning in children or lead, the presence of lead in their blood. The number one cause is housing that was built before nineteen seventy-eight because of the lead paint in the home. The child's home was built in nineteen sixty-eight, so it did use lead paint. So this is something that it's, it's alarmist and I think it's unfortunate that people are using a child to, to put forth their own agendas. We are moving as quickly as we can on this. But we all saw the article in the newspaper that there was a tremendous contamination episode dealing with these ubiquitous applesauce packs, these little packets of applesauce, in the parts per million and even parts per thousand of lead that was in the cinnamon. And we're looking at lead in the drinking water in parts per billion. And it was many orders of magnitude greater than that. So there's a lot of sources for lead. It's not that simple. We are moving very quickly. Again, I'll ask the city manager, is this GAMI fuel currently available in the entire state of California?
Mr. Mayor, to my knowledge, no, it is not, but as soon as it becomes available, we'll be ready to start purchasing it.
We've got airport manager here.
This is the airport manager, Benny Stuth. To answer your question, GAMI is not available commercially in California or anywhere for that matter.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you. I just wanted to make that clear because this, we keep hearing this over and over again, that everybody else is using this, but it is not available. So someday it will be, and when it is available, we'll be right there to get it. But currently, it is not available. And so thank you very much for the clarification. Okay, that's all I've got. Thank you. Now, back to the consent calendar, does anybody wish to pull anything on consent for the discussion? Just, just one thing that I'd like to, to mention. On 5.6, that's okay, you don't need to comment on this. But on page five points, page 242, item 5.6, the legislative platform. They, some of the items on there that are listed is very, very important in our legislative platform are the, let me pull this up. And that is the importance of open space and, yeah, it's item number seven. It's to support, promote agriculture, open space preservation, historic preservation, and good design. And so these are things that are very important. And what we do is when we do go back to Washington DC, when we're working on the state level, these are the legislative things that we promote. So I think it's very important that this is, this is something that's important to the city, and this is actually in our legislative platform that we, that we carry with us. In fact, next week, I'll be going up to the state, carrying this legislative platform, platform as well. But again, open space preservation, historic preservation continue to be very important for this community. So with that, do I have a motion for the consent calendar? Oh, public comment.
There's no public comment.
Okay, thank you. I knew that. Okay, there being no public comment, I'm going to close public comment period. And bring it back to the council, is there a motion for the consent calendar?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Branning, seconded by Councilmember Kik. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Onto public hearings, item 6.1. This is a hearing to consider the Housing Element Annual Progress Report, tracking the city's progress toward implementing the housing element of the general plan.
Honorable Mayor Marshawn and members of the city council, this is your city manager, Mariana Mardesha. Item 6.1 is going to be presented by Shannon Pagan, Assistant Planner, with the assistance of Steve Riley, Acting Planning Manager. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for that introduction. Good evening, Mayor Marshawn and members of the city council. Again, my name is Shannon Pagan, Assistant Planner, and tonight I will be presenting the 2023 Housing Element Annual Progress Report. This report is prepared annually and represents a compilation of data tracking the city's progress, meeting the goals and objectives of the housing element. Livermore's updated housing element was adopted by the city council and certified in March of 2023. So this report represents the first year implementing the updated housing element. The preparation and filing of the annual progress report is required by state law and maintains the city's eligibility for various funding and housing grant programs. So it's a really important report that we do each year, and it is due to the state by April 1st. So if you accept the report this evening, we will be filing it and submitting it to the state by the April 1st deadline. The state's reporting requirements have increased considerably over the last several years and are continuing to expand. The primary focus historically has been on reporting the number of building permits issued by income level as well as reporting progress implementing our housing programs. Over the last five years, the state has requested more detail and added additional reporting requirements to get a more comprehensive picture of housing applications as they move through the entitlement process. While it's a considerable effort for local jurisdictions to complete this report, it is very impressive to see the data come together each year and serves as a really good indicator of the progress that we are making to implement our housing element. With the adoption of our updated housing element in 2023, began a new regional housing needs allocation cycle, or the RENA, as we call it. We are now in the sixth cycle RENA, which spans an eight-year period corresponding with our housing element ending in 2031. The RENA provides housing targets by income level, as shown in this last column here. You can see it broken down by, by income level. And we see that Livermore's RENA targets include accommodating 4,570 units by the end of 2031. So this table shows us our progress in this first year of the sixth RENA cycle. Before we get too deep into this table, just a quick reminder that units are counted towards the RENA at the time building permits are issued. So this table again shows our cumulative contributions for the sixth cycle, which includes units that were issued a building permit in the projection period between the fifth and sixth cycles as well as the 2023 APR reporting period. The number of building permits issued in 2023 was lower than we've seen in the last two APR reporting periods, and again, lower in the years prior to 2020, likely a result of current market conditions here in the Tri Valley and larger Bay Area, increasing construction costs as well as ongoing litigation of approved residential projects here in the city. Another quick note on this table before we move on. You can see that we did not issue any building permits for the very low and low-income categories. We didn't, the projects that we issued building permits did not include those type of units this year. In general, meeting the, the targets for these type of units in the category, in this category is difficult due to the high public subsidies that are necessary to fund these types of units. However, in the, in the near future, we do expect to see some contributions not only to these lower-income categories, but across the board in all of our income categories as there are multiple residential projects that are undergoing review and even some starting construction that will contribute to this table in the very near future. I will highlight a few of those projects in a couple slides. And before I get to those, I just wanted to touch on our housing programs progress. Again, 2023 was the first year implementing our updated housing elements. So many of the programs are new and the progress is ongoing. But of note, the city continues to make progress implementing our inclusionary ordinance, requiring 10% to 20% of affordable units depending on the location in the city. In 2023, we executed several low-income housing agreements securing over 90 affordable units in the low and moderate income categories for buyers in the future. So we'll be really excited to see those units reflected in our RENA numbers when the building permits are issued for those projects. We also continue to encourage ADUs in the city, and in fact, 70% of the building permits that we issued in 2023 were for ADUs. We continue to expect that they will make up a significant portion of the units that are issued building permits each year due to state streamlining provisions. In addition to that, we continue to make progress implementing a variety of housing assistance programs, including funding local nonprofits and homelessness programs as well as identifying other opportunities for creating affordable units by leveraging our local housing trust funds. So as I mentioned a moment ago, the APR not only requires us to report on the building permits issued, but also includes status on projects as they move through the entitlement process. So I wanted to take a few slides to go over several residential projects currently moving through the approval process. And while these slides are not a comprehensive list of all the residential project applications, they do provide a snapshot of some of the projects that are in the pipeline. We do expect to see these units contribute to the implementation of our housing programs and be reflected in our RENA allocations over the next several years, again, when the building permits are issued for the projects. So first, we have the Arroyo Vista development in the Arroyo Vista neighborhood plan off of Las Pecitas. This project includes 435 approved units. This was entitled back in 2017, but it's on the move again. It includes 52 affordable units, both in the moderate and low-income categories. And we expect construction to begin in the summer of 2024 on this project. The next few slides are dedicated to some projects in the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan. This is an area in the city where we expect to see a bulk of the permit, building permit activity in the coming years, as was the intent of the INSP when it was adopted. And this area can accommodate the types of residential densities that are needed to help us meet our RENA allocations. And they do so in a way that's less impactful to our established, single-family neighborhoods while being compatible with the types of existing residential densities that are currently on the ground in the INSP area. Another important note, all these projects that I'm going to highlight will meet the INSP Inclusionary Ordinance requirements for affordable units, with the majority of them falling into the, the moderate income category. But they will also contribute to the very low and low-income categories. So this first one highlights Triad East and West. This is, these are located on North Canyon Parkway, on east and west of Triad Drive. Triad West is under construction, and Triad East is approved. Both of these include moderate unit, affordable units in the moderate category. Next, we have the Shea 2B Condominiums and Apartment Projects. These are located north of Portola Avenue and Collier Canyon Road. Shea 2B condominiums are under construction, and the Shea 2B apartments have an improved entitlement. However, they are undergoing further development review as they are proposing a unit increase. It's important to note that the Shea 2B apartments include units in the low, the very low and low-income categories. Lastly, to highlight in the INSP, we have the Shea 2A Aura Project and the Harridge Development. These are south of Portola Avenue, on the east and west side of Isabel Avenue. Harridge is another project that will provide a pretty substantial number of the very low and low-income units with this project. So the big takeaway there here is that there are a lot of current development applications for projects in the INSP that will collectively propose over nearly 2, 2,500 units at completion and will provide contributions to all income categories in the RENA at the time building permits are issued. And just a few more, we have, just a couple more that are included in the 2023 APR. This quickly of note, we have the Pacific Avenue Development right across the street from City Hall here in the Old Knott Hill Center, as well as the Church Street Apartments just outside of the downtown core. And to bring it home, we have the Approved Assisted Living at the Well on Holmes and Concanon. That one offers 84 assisted living units that would also contribute to the RENA. And finally, our Vineyard 2.0, which completed construction at the end of December 2023 with a soft opening and is now fully open and occupied, providing permanent supportive housing and supportive services to very low-income residents here in the city. So I think with that, I'll put a pin in all of that. And overall, we have lots of housing activity underway and on the horizon and enough to keep us busy for next year's APR. In closing, staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution accepting the 2023 Housing Element Annual Progress Report, and staff is available for questions.
There. Thank you very much. Questions from the council? Westmere?
Yeah, so thanks for the report on the Arroyo Vista. If I'm doing my math, 52 is not the right, is not at least 15%. It's less than that. So are they making up for it with an in-lug fee? I think that needs to be clear to the people.
Yes, Councilmember Carling, they are making up with an in-lug fee that was done through a development agreement in 2017.
Okay, just wanted to be clear, because if you look at the rest of them, I think they're all 20% or thereabouts. And then in the staff report, you said that for sale, the requirement's 15%. And is it half of that supposed to be low? I missed, I didn't quite understand the wording in the staff report, whether or not half needs to be low and ultra, very low?
Yes, I think it's 7.5%.
Okay, so it's not 7.5% of 15, it's 7.5% of the total. Yes, thank you.
Yes.
So this is Paul Spencer, Assistant City Manager. It varies by district in Livermore. So most of the city is 15% and includes a 7.5% low and very low. In the Isabel Neighborhood, the for-sale units are median and moderate, and the apartment units include the low and very low. So it varies a bit by district.
Sure. Okay, I just want clarity around the staff report. Thank you.
Just questions?
I'm not great at math, but I'm, so call me out if I'm wrong. 2023, 2031 is about eight years, correct? I think that math is not that hard. Our goal for our remaining RENA is 4,448. If we were to just do raw numbers, we should be looking at approving over 550 units a year to be on track. We're at 122. I don't think that's a reflection of staff. I think it's a reflection of how difficult this is. Do you know, in relation to our neighbors, if we are considered on track? Technically, no, straight numbers, we're not on track. However, relatively, can you discuss how we're doing in the Tri Valley?
So for the city of Livermore, as Shannon emphasized, we are a little bit behind the average that we need to be. But again, we do have a lot in the pipeline, and besides the INSP, we have some other projects that she did not highlight. And also with the INSP, she'd mentioned the projects that are just in progress are the 2,500. There's other INSP areas that have not even applied for entitlements yet. So the INSP, as you know, is planned for 35,000 to 4,000 units just on its own. So we think that's going to contribute significantly to meeting our RENA goal for 2023 to 2031. I don't have information on some of our neighboring cities. We do know from our experience that all the cities have a difficult time being the low and very low income numbers because, again, of the, the large public subsidies needed for those projects. So we're sort of in line with a lot of our neighbors when it comes to the low and very low. We do our best to meet that as we move forward.
I haven't seen the other cities, but I do believe in other years we have been ahead, if not one of the top. I just did want to point out that if you're just looking at straight math, I get that this might seem below average. However, I, I just wanted to point out that these numbers, I believe, are just a testament to how difficult it is to get these projects off the ground, even when there are no extra unnecessary barriers. So that was, that was my only clarification there. And I think you answered my, my question that we do have some different rules in the INSP about what's a rental and what's not. I see not as many rental units as I was, would generally like. because we know that a lot of people can't afford to buy homes, but I think the Isabel Neighborhood Plan is going to really support with those rental units. So thank you for the update.
You might mention what INSP stands for. I'm not sure everybody in this room knows what that stands for.
Sorry about that. It's the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan area.
Thank you.
Good call. Thank you.
Questions?
Just a small question for my education and have some comments for later. But when we talk about affordable, low income, very low income housing, it has to be subsidized housing, correct? If we do building by design, say an ADU that is renting for a lower price because there's smaller square footage, that would not count still for affordable, any of the affordable categories. Is that correct?
The typically ADUs are recorded in the moderate category. They do not account, go in the low income, but they are moderate and they are, we assume that they are rentals and belong in that category rented for moderate prices.
Okay, but if, you know, any small footprint apartment, if there wasn't a subsidy, it would count as either the moderate or market rate, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
On this avenue one, that's been approved for many years now, right? Building of what are they going to build there? Because one of the things I have invested in is my life. So we meet in Millville and been hearing rumors for years now that the developer is going to go and do something there. Everybody's bailing out now. So can you give me an idea? I kind of, this is a rhetorical question. But what's, why is ID developers taking such a long time to build and yet go into construction?
So the project actually has not been approved yet. We've had discussions on and off, and the developer has spoken to us and then kind of cooled their jets for a while. They are very actively in process right now, and we are in the midst of reviewing their application. We expect to bring it forward to Planning Commission and City Council later this year. So you will see a project there. The current project does not include any commercial uses, but we have heard anecdotally that Millville is and some of the other tenants there are looking at other spaces in the city for relocation.
Okay, with that, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
No public comment.
Okay, in that case, I'm going to close the public hearing. Question, now, the city does not build housing. We rely on the market to build housing and we also require partners and some of these low and extremely low require significant subsidies. And that's why we're, we're not where we would like to be because the market and the subsidies just are not there. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so it's not because we're not trying. It's just that the market's not building it and we don't have the subsidies in place. Okay, great. Thank you. Councilmember Branning?
Yeah, I just have a comment from, I was at the Cal Cities Housing and Economic Development Policy Committee. It's a very, very long name. And one of the things that was brought up is actually about the annual progress report that we should be monitoring legislation is currently going through that would add in punitive measures if we're not meeting certain milestones. It shouldn't affect this year, but if the legislation passes, it might affect future years. It's not just going to be where we currently are that we might lose out on some grant funding, but some of the proposed legislation would reopen us up to builders remedy, applications, things like that. So I just wanted to inform staff of those developments and to make sure we're following that legislation closely.
Those punitive measures will likely impact most cities because, as we discussed earlier, most cities have a very hard time meeting those very low and low income categories, which are the things targeted through the legislation. So it's it's set up to catch almost all of the cities.
Yeah, it's very punitive how they're setting it up currently. I know in our ledge platform, we are looking to make sure we have, you know, control over how our city is built and this legislation will be very damaging, I believe, if it passes, not just to our city, but to, as you said, almost every city. The milestones are virtually impossible to reach.
Unless you're in Marin County and then it's, then you get a pass. So, okay, with that, and it's not like we aren't trying. I mean, we, six years ago, we passed an affordable housing project, a hundred and thirty apartments, and we're still battling in court on that one. So it's not for lack of trying, but just the market. Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion. A motion made by Councilmember Kik?
Second.
Worth a second? Okay, seconded by Councilmember, by, by, by Smear Carling. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to six point two, this is a resolution authorizing and approving and adopting an amended permanent local housing allocation program, five-year plan to relocate funds. Six point two.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, this is once again your City Manager, Mariana Maresheva. And six point two is going to be presented by Natalia Jolina in the Housing and Human Services Division with the assistance of Fran Reisner, our Housing and Human Services Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Give us just a second to load the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you, Mariana, for introduction. Today for your consideration is the approval of an amendment to the city's two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-three PLHA Permanent Local Housing Allocation Plan. The city is an entitlement recipient of permanent local housing allocation funds from the state of California Housing Community Development. The total estimated award for the five-year plan is one million, one million two hundred fifty-one thousand two hundred forty dollars. The PLHA program provides communities with direct assistance to increase the local housing stock through a wide range of eligible activities for extremely low to moderate income households. The city is required to adopt and maintain a five-year plan with, with eligible activities that are funded by the PLHA dollars. On November fourteen, two thousand twenty-two, the City Council amended, adopted an amended PLHA plan that included two, two, two activities for two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty allocations. These programs were shared housing rehabilitation for extremely low-income individuals with developmental disabilities and Vineyard two point O Housing Navigation and Operating Subsidies. Per PLHA State Guidelines, a public hearing is required to consider an adoption of the amendment of the city's plan. Following the previous adopted plan, the city partnered with Tri Valley Reach to assist with funding for two rehabilitation projects that supply supportive shared housing for extremely low-income tenants with individual and developmental disabilities. The City Council approved low-interest loans for those properties which were funded through the two thousand nineteen PLHA allocation. The scope of rehabilitation included expansion of bedroom spaces to accommodate additional tenants, structural improvements, interior renovation, landscaping design, and accessibility improvements. The Colgate Shared Housing Project was completed in two thousand twenty-three and the project located in Camden Common was open its doors to four new residents on February fourteen, two thousand twenty-four. The city expanded the full amount of two hundred and eight thousand five hundred forty dollars of its two thousand nineteen PLHA allocation for this project. The city had allocated two thousand twenty PLHA funding for this project. However, there were no additional projects identified. Therefore, the two thousand twenty PLHA funds need to be reprogrammed to other activities. This table here summarizes the current PLHA plan allocations. As previously mentioned, two thousand, two hundred and eight thousand five hundred forty dollars in two thousand nineteen, funding has been expanded on the shared Housing Rehabilitation Program. However, two thousand twenty funding for this program is no longer needed. If shared housing rehabilitation needs presented in the future, the staff will identify other sources to address those funding needs. Therefore, staff recommends reprogramming three hundred and seven thousand nine hundred thirty dollars in two thousand twenty PLHA funding to other activities supporting Vineyard and homeless services. For the PLHA amended plan, staff recommends to relocate funds in years two thousand twenty and beyond to activities that assist persons who are experiencing or at risk of homelessness per PLHA guidelines, specifically housing navigation, rental assistance, and expanded overnight shelter operations at Vineyard. Designate future two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three PLHA application funds to the state for those activities. The two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-three amended plan proposed activities would provide funding to Housing Consortium of the East Bay HCEB, Open Heart Kitchen Refuge Overnight Shelter Program at Vineyard Resource Center and Rental Assistance for CityServe to address the needs of the unhoused community members. A brief overview of the proposed activities. The construction of the Vineyard two point O was finished in December two thousand twenty-three and the Vineyard Resource Center opened its doors in January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. In addition to twenty-three units of permanent housing for extremely low-income households, the Vineyard Resource Center provides a multitude of services to address the homeless individuals in crisis, including twenty-bed overnight refuge shelter operated by the Open Heart Refuge Program. The reprogrammed two thousand twenty PLHA funding allocation will allow the twenty-bed shelter to sustain operations seven days a week, providing overnight shelter refuge for persons from inclement weather, along with breakfast and dinner through open-heart kitchen, daily showers, laundry services, and access to housing navigation. Following state requirements, staff recommends City Council adopt two resolutions authorizing the following. Authorizing approving and adopting an amended Permanent Local Housing Allocation Plan for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-three. Authorizing the city manager to execute the PLHA program application with the two thousand twenty-three PLHA Notice of Funding Availability, which was released in December twenty-nine of two thousand twenty-three. Authorizing the city manager to accept and appropriate the allocations for the amended PLHA plan and authorizing the city manager to sign all documents related to the execution of grant agreements with subgrantees. Thank you for your time and consideration, and the staff is open for questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Are there any comments?
Yes, sir. The first speaker is Margaret Ann Fortner.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Margaret Ann Fortner. I'm the Senior Program Manager of Crisis Stabilization at the, at City Serve the Tri Valley. I want to thank the council for their support in providing human, providing the needs, the funding needed to support those in need in our community. City Serve the Tri Valley has had the honor of partnering with the city of Livermore for several years, and we've seen lives change. In the last four years, over a hundred unsheltered participants in our program have become housed. Sorry. Over a hundred, a hundred unsheltered participants have become housed and every little bit of subsidy funding to help those individuals helps them move out of crisis and start to stabilize. They each work with an individual on a care plan and it can take a year, it could take three months. It's all individualized to the person that we're serving. I have seen many people walk through and they've been living in a in one of our encampments and they've faced addiction and many different issues. I've seen moms that have escaped domestic violence with their children and those deposit funds are, and rental assistance funds are vital. So I would ask you to go ahead and approve the amended request that's before you. And I just thank you for partnering with us to do the work to serve our community. Thank you.
The next speaker is Carl Winty.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you all for what you do. Speaking on item six point two and staying on topic, but before I do, just want to say thank you. Those put on a bulletproof vest, go to work, keep us safe. Any in the badges here that make work, those that run for elected office, why do you do it? Y'all crazy, but someone needs to in this. The staff, as it flows, it's an imperfect system, doing the best that we can to move it forward for the benefit of our society. Salute those that look after the most destitute and the, the people that are in most need. Quote Mother Teresa of doesn't feel like a drop in the bucket. No, it feels like a drop in the ocean because you can never do enough. But fundamentally, we want to do everything that we can and put money to work. The Tri Nonprofit Alliance, I forget the acronym, Nonprofit Alliance, what a great organization. Thank you for doing what you do. Who is just up here, the work that you do is awesome. I would love to say, take every advantage of just educating us citizens that don't know much about all of this in terms of the three-letter acronyms, and I'm furiously looking up and what's there. PLHA, we got that. NOFA, got that after circling back. Rena, Rena comes from a state law, I believe. I'm not sure. How does that play in against that one? Rena, is it about entitlements or, but the progress is about building permits and da-da-da. One slide can educate the public. And this is an open government. An open government implies that we're speaking the same language, but in fact, we're not because we're not, we as a citizenry don't have, we're not studying as much and reading into it. So just help us, help everyone that's listening know what all of this means because it matters, right? It matters greatly. Greg Scott's not here and we're talking about housing and homelessness and the, the book that Mr. Carling, you and I both read, I think others have as well, of homelessness is a housing problem. And he said, well, he doesn't like that title because it's a structural problem. It's much more than that, but fundamentally heads and beds, having rooms, having a place, having a safe place works. And he said, decommodify the housing market, which means that the free market is not building affordable. And even with all the work that you're doing, trying to push it forward, the great work of staff, it still doesn't happen. The free market is not driving it forward. So trying, right? Because it takes a little bit of social dollars to get this done. The free market is not doing it. So you got to keep pushing that stone up the hill, the Sisyphean roll on up because incrementally makes a difference. I think the second major point that I never heard Greg Scott talk about as it relates to the book, which is on homelessness and on the funds going to this subject was shelters work. Shelters work, right? To give people a place when they're in the most crisis, shelters work. In every case study throughout that book, it works. So continuing the great work of, I'm pointing behind me, but just I heard you speak and what you do to give people an opportunity in crisis to step out of that crisis to a safe spot. Shelters work. Our affordable housing system is not perfect. Keep pushing that stone up the hill. Thank you so much. Cheers.
And that concludes public comment.
And it's Tri Valley Nonprofit Alliance, TVNPA. Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. Questions, comments from the council by Councilmember Branning?
Thank you. You know, as always, I spent half an hour talking about all of the great stuff in this. I very much appreciate the work you put into here. I have a few just general things I wanted to check in on. So I wanted to say first of all that I really appreciate the work that Tri Valley Reach has done, the rehabilitation of the homes. I believe, just to clarify, the reason that they did not get the funding in two thousand twenty is they just simply couldn't find a property to rehabilitate. Is that correct? Yeah, so it's unfortunate. That said,
That's correct.
Thank you. Yeah. That said, the funding that we're getting, it's a little over a million dollars over five years. This is entirely grant. This is entirely grant funding, so it's not city funds, general funds going to this. I think it's a really good return we have on our investment with Vineyard 2.0. That comes out to about roughly with the remainder of the term, around a thousand dollars per bed per month. That is a pretty good deal in my book. It's, you know, not perfect, but we are getting heads in beds, as they say, for a thousand dollars per bed per month. To Ms. Sutton's point earlier, you know, part of this is paying for staff, paying for services. Vineyard 2.0 has a great model where you're allowed to stay in a shelter bed for multiple days. You don't have to leave and try to get back in line and work to get another spot. They have services to try to find permanent supportive housing, or just permanent unsupported housing for people who are able. And I really just want to thank everything that Ms. Fortner does and everyone at Vineyard 2.0. I think this is money super well-spent. I think this is really effective and meaningful use for the funds. And to Mr. Wente's point, it may be a drop in the ocean, but for the twenty people who are sleeping there at night, it can be life-changing. So, thank you.
Comments? Oh, Councilmember Kik?
Yeah, I just want to get a couple clarification points. So it is twenty twenty-four, we are reallocating funding from two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, and two thousand and twenty-three, correct?
Thank you for asking. We're relocating two thousand and twenty funding.
Only two thousand and twenty funding?
Yes.
Just the yellow. Okay. Mr. Wente left, but I was about to give him some education. So nonprofits like City Serve don't just get checks from the state, they depend on city contracts. And those city contracts are extremely important when they are allocating their funding. It's important for organizations like this to have funded diversification, so that if they don't get that city contract, they can still help people out. I'm concerned that two thousand and twenty funding is just being reallocated in two thousand and twenty-four, that that city contract that we are now giving could have gone to good use elsewhere. I get it's, it's really difficult, and we are, we are looking at kind of changing how we are allocating funding in our Human Services Commission, and I know changing CDG, uh, these are CDG, HDD funds is difficult. But it's, I can't wait to see where we are always spending every dollar we have the year we get it. On a second note, the Colgate Rehab Project is actually my neighbor, right across the street, and so I got to watch that get done, and it wasn't just, let's make the front yard pretty. It is making that front yard useful, because multiple of the residents have mobility devices, and now they can get to the, what is it, when it's the dial-a-ride service that comes multiple times a day, every day, very easily, and to the driveway and the trash cans and all the other things they need to do. So projects like that are also pretty awesome. So thank you for this work, and I look forward to passing this funding along so that it can help people in need. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any comments? Okay, I'd like to recognize John Bost from Open Heart Kitchen here tonight, and to commend the great success the Vineyard 2.0 has become. In the first month, they served thousands of meals, two hundreds of individual guests, and provided hundreds of laundry service applications, and just mail service, all the things that we all take for granted, but are critically important if you're going to have a hand up for people so that they can lift themselves up and eventually be self-sustaining. So thank you for the great work that you're doing, and, and all the great work that everybody's coming together to, we, we so depend upon our nonprofits to do the heavy lifting on this. So thank you all very much for the great work that you do. Thank you. That's a, sure. Okay, so with that, I'd be willing to recommend, to take a motion?
I will move staff for our presentation.
I'll second.
I'll give that one to Ben. Ben, he had his hand raised. So motion made by Councilmember Branding, seconded by Councilmember Beriantos. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you very much. And now, moving on to the main event. By the way, I just have to tell you, folks, just to underscore how hard the staff works. The packet tonight was two thousand six hundred and ninety pages. The, uh, just item six point three was two thousand three hundred and forty pages long. There's a tremendous amount of work that went into this. We have Ashley Vera tonight, who's going to be presenting. But altogether, including the two hundred and seventy pages of supplemental material, the members of the council up here went through two thousand nine hundred and sixty pages that our staff put together so that we can come together and make the best decisions that we can. We get the best information so we can make the best decisions, and that's part of the commitment that we have. So when I talk to elementary kids, I tell them, if you want to do this job, read, yeah, love reading, because it's something that's going to be absolutely critically important. So with that, I'll hand it off to the staff that did a tremendous heavy lift on this one. So thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you introduced the speaker already. Thank you, but I wanted to echo your praise to staff and thank our team, including Ashley Vera, as well as many other staff members for the incredible work on this item. And also wanted to thank Mayor and City Council for paying attention and reading two thousand-plus pages of documents that we prepared for you. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ashley Vera. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate that. All right, so tonight I will be presenting the SMP or Surface Mining Permit thirty-nine and forty project. So the project is surrounded by the Livermore Municipal Airport to the north, Isabel Avenue and State Route eighty-four to the east, Stanley Boulevard to the south, and El Charro Road to the west. The project includes SMP thirty-nine, SMP forty, and four additional parcels shown here in the pink polygons. The SMP numbers are related to mining permits for the two SMP sites shown on this map. These permits were approved by Alameda County in two thousand and four to allow for the extraction of sand and gravel. However, aggregate mining has not occurred within these sites. Each of these properties is located within Alameda County, and they are also within the city of Livermore's urban growth boundary. SMP thirty-nine is within the city of Pleasanton's Sphere of Influence, or SOI. The project includes amending the SOI boundary to include SMP thirty-nine in the city of Livermore's SOI. In addition, SMP thirty-nine would be annexed or made a part of the city limits. Finally, the proposal for SMP thirty-nine includes light industrial development. The city of Pleasanton City Council voted to support the SOI amendment and annexation at their March nineteenth City Council meeting. A letter of support from the city of Pleasanton has been provided in the supplemental packet. SMP forty is within the city of Livermore's SOI, but located outside of the city's limits. The project includes annexing SMP forty into the city and developing the property with light industrial uses similar to those proposed for SMP thirty-nine. The pink area shown here represents four additional parcels that are currently within the city's sphere of influence, but they are located outside of the city's limits. The city has requested that these parcels be annexed into the city to create a logical boundary to the city limit line. Development is not proposed on these four additional parcels. The project consists of the entitlements and actions shown on this slide. It should be noted that there is only one site plan design review, or SPDR, proposed for the project tonight. This SPDR is specific to the SMP forty property. The developer would like to develop the SMP forty property first and return in the future with an SPDR for the SMP thirty-nine property in the future. The future SPDR for the SMP thirty-nine property would be subject to planning commission review and approval. In addition, the project is subject to review and approval by the Alameda County Local Agency Formation Commission, or LAFCO. The project requires LAFCO's review and approval due to the SOI amendment and annexation requests. If the project is approved, staff would submit an application to the Alameda County LAFCO for their review. This is the preliminary site plan for the SMP thirty-nine property. The project includes a vesting tentative map to subdivide the existing parcel into six lots. The proposal includes developing the site with approximately seven hundred and fifty-five thousand square feet of light industrial development. Examples of light industrial development include research and development facilities, professional administrative offices, experimental and testing laboratories, manufacturing and warehouse and distribution facilities. Access to the site would be from West Jack London Boulevard. This is the proposed site plan for the SMP forty property. The proposal includes a vesting tentative parcel map to divide the property into two parcels with one building on each parcel. The proposal includes approximately seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand square feet of light industrial development similar to the uses proposed for the SMP thirty-nine property. Access to the site would be from Atlantis and Challenger site, uh, streets, which are existing streets north of the property. It should be noted that the site plan incorporates noise-reducing design features, particularly through screening walls and landscaped berms, to reduce noise impacts to residences located further to the east. The developer has signed a lease agreement with Lamb Research for the western building and approximately four hundred and seventy thousand square foot building. Lamb Research is a local business with manufacturing facilities located in Isabel neighborhood. This development would allow Lamb Research to expand in Livermore by providing a location for their supply chain and logistics operations. This architectural rendering is for the western building on the SMP forty property. The buildings on the property consist of concrete tilt-up panels with aluminum storefront framing and tempered glass at the building entrances and office areas. The buildings would be approximately forty-seven feet in height. Building colors proposed for the buildings consist of primarily off-white, gray, and blue tones. These design details are consistent with the nearby Oaks Business Park development, as well as the city's design standards and guidelines. This is a rendering of the building now on the east side of the SMP forty property, and as you can see, the architecture is very similar to that of the property adjacent to it. The proposed planned development zoning for both SMP thirty-nine and SMP forty will allow some typical light industrial uses such as those listed on this slide. It should be noted that warehouse and distribution uses are permitted on SMP forty, but they are conditionally permitted on the SMP thirty-nine property. In addition, warehouse and distribution uses are limited to a thirty, excuse me, twenty percent of the buildable site area on the SMP thirty-nine site. This creates an opportunity for uses specifically at the SMP thirty-nine property that are economically desirable and higher wage, or higher job generating uses. The project includes on- and off-site trail improvements. The onsite trail consists of a paved at-grade trail shown here in the dashed green line. This trail is consistent with the city's active transportation plan. This new onsite trail would connect to an existing trail that is just west of the Oaks Business Park shown here in purple, and make further connections further west to the San Francisco premium outlets. In addition, the project includes an off-site trail connection. Three trail connection options were evaluated as part of the project analysis. The off-site trail improvements label here represents staff's preferred alternative or trail connection option. This option would connect to the existing Royal Bike Trail shown here in the solid purple line on the east side of Isabel Avenue, and cross Isabel Avenue, State Route eighty-four via a bridge. Once on the west side of Isabel, the off-site trail improvement would connect northward towards that new onsite trail on the SMP forty property. The project includes a development agreement for SMP thirty-nine and SMP forty. Per these development agreements, the developers require to provide a one hundred thousand dollar contribution towards marketing SMP thirty-nine, towards the desired uses in the new zoning district for these properties. This contribution will go to the city's Office of Innovation and Economic Development Department. In addition, the developers require to construct and provide a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar contribution towards the off-site trail improvements. It should be noted that the off-site trail is estimated to cost approximately two point five million dollars. The remainder of the trail cost will be funded through grant funding, or the city will credit the developer using traffic impact fees, less the developer's contribution. Finally, the development agreements, as well as the conditions of approval, require that the property owner forfeit the mining rights that are currently granted to these properties by Alameda County. It should be noted that if the SMP sites are not developed, then mining activity could occur on these sites consistent with the permits granted by Alameda County. An environmental impact report, or EIR, was prepared for the project. The EIR analyzed resource topics shown on this slide. Each of these topics are discussed in a separate chapter of the EIR, including a description of the existing environmental setting, the regulatory setting, and the impacts that would result from the project. A summary of the impacts found in the EIR is listed here. A majority of these impacts would be mitigated to a less than significant level. However, one impact was determined to be significant unavoidable. This impact is related to agricultural resources, specifically the conversion of farmland to non-agricultural uses. While SMP thirty-nine and SMP forty are not considered farmland pursuant to the Department of Conservation, the Sphere of Influence Amendment and the annexation is subject to LAFCO review and approval. Therefore, the project was reviewed against LAFCO's policies related to farmland. Per LAFCO policy, SMP thirty-nine and SMP forty are considered prime farmland, and the conversion of this land to industrial uses would be considered significant unavoidable. It should be noted that these sites are not used for farming operations, as the sites have gone fallow and are currently disced. In addition, the sites are not under a Williamson Act contract. When there is a significant unavoidable impact, CEQA requires decision-makers to balance the benefits of the project against its unavoidable environmental impacts. Approval of the project would revitalize underutilized lands that are appropriate for infill development, and that is consistent with surrounding development. It would also promote industrial development that is consistent with our general plan, and would provide jobs with competitive salaries and provide necessary on- and off-site improvements to the roadway system. The project would also create logical boundaries that align with the city's urban growth boundary, as well as, as well as improvements to the on- and off-site trail system. Finally, the project would generate long-term sustainable property and sales tax revenues. The project was presented to various commissions and the Pleasanton City Council. Firstly, since the project requires a general plan amendment, it is subject to the review of the Alameda County Airport Land Use Commission. The project proposes light industrial development, which is a compatible land use regarding noise, height, and flight clearance, as well as public safety, as described in the Alameda County Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, or ALUCP. The Alameda County Airport Land Use Commission reviewed the project and determined that it is compatible with the ALUCP. The city of Livermore's Airport Commission also reviewed the project and found the project compatible with the Livermore Airport Protection Area, as well as the ALUCP, with the condition that navigation easements be required for the properties. This has been made a condition of approval for the project. The Planning Commission reviewed the project earlier this month and unanimously recommended approval of the project with conditions that minor modifications be made to the onsite trail, the transportation demand management program requirements, as well as landscaping. These conditions have all been revised following the Planning Commission meeting and are in the conditions of approval for the project. Finally, as I noted earlier, the city of Pleasanton, Pleasanton City Council voted to support this Sphere of Influence Boundary Amendment and Annexation at their March nineteenth City Council meeting. If the city council approves the project, an application to LAFCO will be submitted on behalf of the city. LAFCO is a state-mandated local agency that oversees boundary changes to cities and special districts such as the Sphere of Influence and annexation requests for this project. It is anticipated that staff would attend LAFCO later this spring or summer. It is anticipated that staff would attend LAFCO later this spring or summer of this year. In conclusion, planning staff and, excuse me, Planning Commission and staff recommend that the City Council take the following actions, including adopting a resolution certifying the EIR and associated CEQA documents, adopt a resolution approving the general plan amendment, the subdivision maps and the site plan design review, introduce an ordinance related to the planned development zoning, zoning map amendment and development code amendment, introduce two ordinances authorizing execution of the DAs respectively for SMP 39 and SMP 40, and adopting a resolution authorizing staff to submit an application to LAFCO. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for questions. I will also note that the applicant is here today as well and would like to present a brief presentation for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank God, Mark. Everyone hear me okay? Good evening, Mayor Mashawn and Livermore City Council members. My name is Tim Moore Tussimer. I'm managing partner of Overton Moore Properties. When we started on this project back in 2019, I didn't think we'd get to, I think, 2,370 pages. So it's been quite a project and fact, during my career, this project would be a fantastic case study for some real estate students to really see how urban planning, economic development and collaboration between a developer and the city work. And again, commend Ashley Vera for everything that she's done on the project. A brief overview of our company, we've been in business since 1972. We are one of the most active private developers in Northern California. In fact, a few years ago, we were named Developer of the Year for a project in Fremont, California. I'm going to make a brief presentation because I know you've reviewed all the information. We have all of our consultants here and the CEQA consultant here, so we're open to answer any questions for you. So at that, I'm just going to go into the presentation, but thank you again and hopefully, thank, thank you for your consideration and hopefully we can move to the next step forward. The projects have been open, both projects have, sites have been owned by the Pleasanton Gravel Company for the last 50 years. And as Ashley mentioned, they're vacant grassland and the intent was to do surface mining there. I have to put on my glasses, excuse me. So, you know, we, we've been working on this project, as I mentioned, since 19, since 2019, feels like 19 something. But it's, it's been, it's been a great process. And again, it's been very collaborative. You can go to the next slide, please. So this just gives you an overview. I'm not going to go, go into it. But the, the plan here, you can see SMP 40 highlighted and keep going. Thank you. So SMP 39, so what we're doing with SMP 39, we're putting a track map, six parcels. You saw a very preliminary site plan. Our goal is to really market this property to users, users who are working, creating jobs, high value jobs in the advanced manufacturing business. So I, I feel when we come back to Planning Commission, you're going to see a completely different site plan there. I think you'll see more parking there and really working with Livermore IEDD and Brandon on bringing potential users to the site. We're in fact actually doing that right now. We've had a few calls with some users who have very unique businesses who need build-a-suits. So I think it's pretty exciting to work on projects like that. And then also we'll be dedicating a substantial portion of land to Wyden Jack London Boulevard and the bike trail. Thank you. We can skip that slide. This is a proposed rendering, completely different than SMP 40. So we really, the, the design of the building and the users will be different. And they're going to probably want a more high image building. So SMP 40, two buildings, as Ashley mentioned, we're very fortunate to pre-lease building one to Lamb Research. And building two, we designed the building, if you saw the site plan, to have north-south doors, screen loading areas, and our building is 880 to 1,000 feet closest to the east residential area. So we purposely did that. And then also, as you know, as a condition, we've limited nighttime traffic. Roofs are to, they're going to accommodate PV. We also have a TDM to reduce VMTs. Day one, we'll have 75 EV chargers coming into the project. And one thing that we're doing, we're trying to anticipate in the future, we're trying to put EV conduit in the truck horse for future EV trucks. So we're running that conduit out there. Obviously, no natural gas. And we hope to commence grading July 15th to meet the schedule for Lamb Research. Again, you can see the building here. You've seen us. I'll just move on. This is looking at building two and the south end of building two on the right and then building one is on the left side. So the benefits, high quality jobs, tens of million dollars of annual salary. Obviously, you know, the benefits of the annexation, long-term tax revenue for Livermore. The combination, and this is really the urban planning part of it, the combination of the warehouse distribution and also advanced manufacturing, and then hundreds of new construction jobs, sheet metal workers, local 104, IBW, sprinkler fitters, iron workers and the UAP and S. And in fact, you're going to hear from one gentleman tonight who's a Livermore-based company that we're going to use as our electrical subcontractor. Thank you. Talked about the additional revenue and the jobs, expansion opportunities. We hope to see more expansion opportunities, whether it's in building two or SMP 39. And not only do they, you know, keep businesses in Livermore, but it also supports the retail and restaurants. And then the Arroyo Mucho Trail Connection and getting the bikes off of Isabel. Thanks. Briefly on the benefits, it's, they're big numbers. Over $14 million in development fees, one-time LVJUSD fees when we're paying those fees when we get our building permits. And then, you know, you, you think about these small little additions on your property tax bill, but when you have an increased valuation from $189,000 to $120 million on just SMP 40 alone, that's $242,000 a year in school fees or $4.8 million. The same with property taxes and then also funding for parks and recreation. And again, this is just SMP 40. $100,000 contribution, as Ashley mentioned, and then, and then the bridge, we're committing 750,000, but also soft costs are, the design these bridges and the work with Caltrans, we might even match that other $750,000. The costs on SMP 39 are very similar again. And let me talk about scheduling a little bit. So in our EIR, we have to complete SMP 40 before we can start SMP 39. So it'll also give us a lot of time to really start marketing these buildings to users. Thank you. And that is it. And hopefully I kept it short. And again, I'm available for any questions as well as our consultants. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for the presentations. Okay, do we, I'm going to open the public commentary. Do we have public comments?
Yes, sir, we do. The first speaker is Wang Tan, followed by Nigel Cowan, followed by Robert Downs.
Hi, good evening, mayor and council member. Thank you for letting me speak in tonight. My name is Wang Tan. I'm a representative for North Cal Carpenter Union Local 713 in Alameda County. I'm a representative personally, 37,000 member of Northern California and 4,000 in Alameda County, over 200 plus in here at Livermore. I'm here tonight with concern regarding Overton Moore Poverty Propose SMP 39 40 Project. The carpenters unions have reached out to Overton Moore Poverty multiple times regarding several projects during the whole Alameda County, including the one proposed tonight. Overton Moore Poverty have history working with a general contractor who did not ping area standards wages benefit on their project. Historically, the subcontractor from out of the area being the own workforce into the town. For example, Pacific Commons South in Fremont may have been succeed project from developer percent. But much of the workforce is from Southern California. Nevada, Arizona did not receive healthcare or area standards wages. This is not conducive to environment or health of construction worker. So here, here we, here we are again with other proposed industrial projects in the Bay Area without labor standards. The applicants propose the development of 93 acre. I'm here to asking the city what we're getting in return. As in there are many amendment to put Livermore carpenters into this project. Let's be honest, most of carpenter who live in Livermore are working in someone else. If there's some miracle, miracle resident to land on this project, they pay profane wages and are entitled with healthcare and retirement. Once again, what, what we can community getting returned. Overton Moore Poverty not make amendment to using responsible union general contractor. A general contractor partner with North Cal Carpenter Unions have make commit to pay area standards healthcare and support a panis in Livermore, who can opportunity to beginning work. So in conclusion, we ask the city council continue approving proposed project to future date. We asking commission, we request this developer to do in the writing in Livermore and request labor standards in this project. Thank you for, for listening. Thank you.
The next speaker is Nigel Cowan, followed by Robert Downs, followed by Tyler Roast.
Good evening. My name is Nigel Cowan. I'm with West States Mechanical Corporation. We're headquartered in Hayward, California, excuse me. And I'm a 25-year Tri Valley resident myself. We're asking that the project be approved to move forward. We're currently contracted to furnish the design for the automatic fire sprinkler system on this project. We're, we've done numerous projects in the Bay Area. We've worked in Los, at Los Pecitas, Lawrence Livermore Lab, Sandia, a lot of experience here. Again, we're a 483 union contractor, so great wages here. We have individuals on our payroll that are Livermore residents, so this will create work for them. We absolutely want to see this, this project move forward more so for the employees we have and, you know, so they can spend their money here locally in Livermore. Thank you.
The next speaker is Robert Downs, followed by Tyler Roast, followed by Tim Cooper.
Mayor, council members, my name is Robert Downs. I'm a resident here in Livermore. I'm also a member and organizer from UA Local 342 with the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters. I also assist in labor investigations here in Alameda County and also right here in our own city. On a daily basis, I see contractors that are involved in wage theft, labor trafficking in such manners, you know, that are bad for companies. You know, they bring labor from all over the United States and they work right here in our own backyard. So I'm here to speak out for Overton Moore Project because of their longstanding commitment that they've had to the union organizations. Mentioned that they're using a union, you know, local electrical contractor. We just heard West States also talk, which is nice to see that because that includes many of our local guys that live right here, our brothers and sisters, and including our apprentices that are used, you know, from our state-funded apprenticeship programs that we have in the area. And of course, they didn't stop there. We heard their commitment that they're giving $750,000, you know, to the trail system. We also heard their commitment to $100,000 to expand the marketing for these jobs, you know, of companies are trying to bring into these facilities. They're not just another fast food company or another storage facility. You know, these are long-term commitment career paths that people can take with Lamb Research, for example. So as we heard, these are all positive items that we're hearing tonight on this project. And I urge you guys to vote yes on this project and thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Tyler Roast, followed by Tim Cooper, followed by Brandon Evans.
Good evening, council. I'm representing Red Top Electric. We are a union contractor in the Alameda County. And we're specific, we are a local contractor as well, located in Livermore. Been here 20 years and in Alameda County since 1946, so almost 80 years as a union contractor. I am here to represent the SMP 40 project. And on the behalf of Red Top Electric, as a union contractor, we would like for this project to happen. Many of our workers through the union are local Livermore residents and we'll be putting those folks to work on this project along with our office staff, which we have roughly 30 to 40 people in our office, which many of them live here locally in Livermore as well. And we're representing this company or this, this project to happen. We really appreciate your, your thought on this and we're excited about this project. Thank you.
The next speaker is Tim Cooper, followed by Brandon Evans.
Good evening. My name is Tim Cooper. I am the Managing Director for Lamb Research's North America Manufacturing Operations. So we will be the first tenant in Project SP 40. Give you a little bit of background. I've been with the company for about five and a half years, but have run, worked in different businesses in Livermore for the past 23 years. And actually a resident just down the street from where this project will be for the past eight years. So really excited to see the plan come together and kind of build out that area of the city. So definitely appreciate the consideration of the council as well as the hard work that was presented here by the city manager and her staff. Quite impressive work there and kind of humbles me to know that that much work has gone into what we're going to be doing here. So again, I'm not going to go through the full description of what Lamb Research is, but we are a critical supplier within the semiconductor market. And we've now been in the city of Livermore for almost 14 years now. So definitely appreciate the support that's been given to our company and helping us not just grow, but also evolve our business to meet the challenges of the future. So we're on a pretty important timeline here. As most of you know, if you've been watching the news with what's going on with semiconductors, there's a real demand that's out there that we're being challenged to met. So this project is actually really key to positioning us for the growth that we see over the next five to six years. And we would definitely like that growth for what we're doing within our company to be here in Livermore. So extremely important project, really trying to help position us for what the industry is expected to see as a 2X growth over the next five to six years. The location of this facility is also another important factor, which was part of us working with our partners to select this site and that it's in very close proximity to the current factory that we have here in Livermore over off the Los Pecitas, or I think in which you refer to as the Illaville neighborhood. That proximity is very close to help cut down on the trucking traffic between the warehouse and that factory, as well as helping us consolidate multiple warehouses we have today in the Tri Valley area as well as in the Central Valley. So we look forward to successful next outcome on this project and thank you for your consideration.
The next speaker is Brandon Evans, followed by Jesus Mendoza. The next speaker is Brandon Evans, followed by Jesus Mendoza.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Brandon Evans and I'm a business representative with I B double, I B W Local Five Nine Five. And I represent Union Electricians in Alameda County. Tonight, however, I'm here representing not only Union Electricians, but over four hundred households that make their living as union sheet metal workers, sprinkler fitters. Plumbers and ironworkers. I'm speaking tonight from a perspective as an advocate for high-quality union construction being built by our local construction workforces. Who are being paid family-supporting wages. I'm also speaking as someone who has been entrusted to advocate for the general welfare of our members who live here in Livermore. The project will also provide workforce-related community benefits. Dozens of area residents will be employed in its construction. This will include many apprentices who are enrolled in the areas training programs that exist within the trades that I speak for tonight. That means that more opportunity for Livermore and Tri-Valley youth at-risk workers to gain entry into career pathways that put them into uh. Well firmly into America's middle class, excuse me. This incredibly common, or it's incredibly common as construction workers to face long commutes. What isn't always common is having a significant project in your backyard. What's even less common is a city that values work-life balance of its residents and those in surrounding areas like Livermore does. Supporting this project will not only ensure that it is built with skilled and trained workforce. Uh, it will also make a positive difference in a lot of local union households. This is the right project being built at the right location. Is bringing good jobs and other much-needed community benefits. Please support it. Thank you very much.
And the final speaker is Jesus Mendoza.
Hello, my name is Jesus Mendoza and I'm a field rep for the carpenters union. Although, you know, Overton Moore is stating that they are using union work, they're not using carpenters, right? And carpentry is seventy percent of the work. And as my, as my brother Wang had mentioned, you know, there's two hundred members that we have here in Alameda County that are ready to be employed. Which none of them are going to be employed in this project, you know, um, that's something to consider. We have tried contacting them and informed them that we do have general contractors available. That meet, that meet stand, that meet the standards for the city and for these type of projects that are trained. To do these type of projects efficiently, effectively and fast, you know, and they ignore us. So that's just my comments for that, you know, and although, you know. Also, another thing that I do want to mention, the carpenters build the buildings in which we give the other trades quote-unquote work. And um, they're not responding our calls. So that's just all.
And that concludes public comment.
Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing and we're getting awfully close to the witching hour of nine o'clock. So do you want to take a five-minute break and then come back at nine? Sure, okay. So we're going to take a, a quick five-minute break and then we'll come back uh, for deliberations. So, thank you. Okay, let's uh, get everybody back into their seats and we'll uh, uh, go back to the main event. Yeah, right. I could just tap my, my gavel and uh, we'll wait for the TV thirty to count us back in.
In five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome back to part two of the uh, March twenty-fifth meeting of the Livermore City Council. We just went through uh, the staff presentation on six point three, which is the project for S M P surface mining permit. Thirty-nine and forty. Uh, we just completed the uh, uh, public hearing portion. Closed the public hearing and we're bringing it back to the council. Uh, so at that, are there questions from the council? Councilor Brandon.
Sure. Uh, so I have just a couple of questions just to clarify on the project, uh, and I have some comments as well. First of all, I just want to check because this did come up at the Pleasanton Council meeting for S M P thirty-nine. Does that project, is it part of the airport development or uh, is it something different?
No, this project is completely independent of uh, the airport development plan.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, and then I'm just curious for uh, S M P thirty-nine. Since uh, there was a lot of discussion around that, uh, what kind of businesses would go into the uh. What, what kind of businesses potentially would go into S M P thirty-nine?
Sure, I'd like to introduce Brandon Cardwell, our Director of Innovation and Economic Development to um, respond to that question.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Uh, Brandon Cardwell, your Director of Innovation, Economic Development. S M P thirty-nine, uh, through this process has received a specific kind of zoning that does not allow, except in certain cases. For types of uses, um, that are considered to be uh, lower job density and lower wage types of jobs. So e-commerce, distribution, those types of uses. But we're really targeting with S M P thirty-nine specifically are the types of businesses that have a high job density, have a high job quality. And otherwise contribute to the local economy and quality of life. So think of um, companies like, these are simply illustrative, there's been no conversations that any of these companies about it, the P thirty-nine. But Monarch Tractor, Form Factor, obviously Lam Research, Topcon, these companies that have a mix of uses, including office, R and D. Advanced manufacturing and potentially, you know, some storage space. But there's a strong correlation between smaller building sizes in the fifty to hundred and fifty thousand square foot range. And job-dense uh, uses like the ones I've described.
Perfect. So we aren't looking at something like an Amazon distribution center there?
That's correct. In fact, they're expressly prohibited, um, except in the case of a conditional use permit. And there are restrictions on how much of the space could be used for that.
Perfect. Thank you. Uh, so it sounds like a very high-value usage. And then uh, if we were to deny the application in front of us today, uh, what usage would be allowed on the land currently?
The uh, properties would continue under their current zoning and designations with in Alameda County. Which uh, currently include agricultural zoning, but primarily the permits for the surface mining operations. That could occur both on thirty-nine and forty.
And if it was surface mining, what kind of activity would we expect to see? Uh, like trucks, land destruction, that sort of thing? Would we, it would be pretty disruptive, would it not?
Yeah, so it could be with the truck trips, uh, going back and forth, uh, the general operations, um, offloading the material, for example, and transporting it.
Okay, uh, so let's just set up just uh, kind of in my opinion for these projects. The current land usage, it has some value, but not a lot. I think it's actually rather destructive. There had been in mailed comments, environmental concerns in the E I R, we address agriculture. But I don't see this ever being agricultural land. Under current usage, basically trucks could be trucking gravel in and out, uh, causing. What I would say is quite a bit of environmental harm, uh, versus a project that does have. What I think is rather good steward, stewardship of the land, uh, puts it into a well-thought-out plan for high-paying jobs. Really brings value to the community, is planned out to not be disruptive with a large number of truck trips. Uh, and overall, I think is really a nice project for uh, S M P forty, which we know it's going in there. And the potential for S M P thirty-nine looks really to have a very high potential for the city. I would ask the applicant, uh, just if you can, please work with our brothers and sisters in the carpenters union. You know, they are bringing local labor with apprenticeship standards, prevailing wage. Whatever you can do, it is really important to me that, you know, they are brought in on the project. Any way you can make that, if you already have something happening. Where maybe you can bring them in as a partial contractor at least. But those local jobs, the local labor standards are super important to me. I appreciate very much that you're looking to union labor for the remainder of the tasks on the job. But as our brothers in the uh, constructor, or in the carpenters trade pointed out, that they are a major portion of the work. And it is something that is, you know, meaningful. It would be very impactful for the neighborhood. It would get a lot of goodwill for you and the company. Uh, I would definitely help going forward. So I would, I don't know if I can condition or not, but I would ask the uh, applicant to please reach out to the carpenters. See if you can get a deal going with them. I think you'll be surprised at how amenable they are at working with you. If you just get that conversation going. So if you could please do that, I would appreciate it.
Councilor Kik.
Uh, just piggybacking a little bit on those job types. This is something that we're looking to do in the city, uh, because it's important. I believe to have a housing jobs balance. So we had our housing earlier, um, where we talked about the number of units we're supposed to create. We create all those units and there aren't local jobs. It's not meeting our other um, climate action goals, for example. Because people need to commute out to um, to work. So as we eventually push, um, those arena numbers up, our high-quality jobs need to go up. Based on the discussion that I've heard, um, in, in briefings, it seems that we are bringing in high-paying um, jobs. And that um, marketing allocation is unique. That's not something we see very often and the entire goal of that is so that um, your department, Brandon. Can do targeted outreach to those high-density, high-paying jobs, correct?
That's correct.
You're not going to just spend it on Facebook ads for yourself?
No, no.
Yeah, I don't think so. Uh, yeah, so uh, that, it's, it's just a very uh, unique opportunity. That the city negotiated, um, which I think just speaks to our commitment to innovation and making sure that we are doing everything we can. To maintain a, a great jobs housing balance. So thank you for doing that and thank you to the applicant for being amenable to um, to that provision. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilor Verentos, questions, comments?
Oh, I like the idea that we're gonna employ the unions and. Yeah, I'm a union person from the get-go. Worked at Plumber Makers Union when I was a kid going to college. Tough jobs, good paying, and they try to keep me there. Heck no. Anyway, uh, I appreciate uh, the labors out there, carpenters. And I hope we really employ the union and get them involved, let them have the bite of the apple. I think it'd be a great deal for the city and the school district. Seems like everybody's going to get something out of here instead of, you know, to sit there and the mining company look for more gravel. And I'm glad that people understand it's not the expansion of the airport. Because I got those comments and I can't understand why they think that's going to happen. No. The airport's in a little box and they're not going to expand out of there. But it will help the city a lot and I appreciate the staff and I enjoyed the nice reading here. But thank you very much.
Vice Mayor.
Thanks for the report, Ashley. I do have, I'm curious about most of this material that we received today. I assume you read this. Can you comment on this concern of theirs?
Yes, I believe you're holding up the letter from the Golden State Environmental Justice Alliance Group.
Right, that we apparently received Friday.
Yes, it is dated Friday. So that letter is actually a set of comments that we, that were very similar to comments that we received after the, or rather during the draft environmental impact report. In summary, the comment discusses the modeling that was done, primarily the air quality modeling for construction for the project. And the commenter essentially disagrees with the way that we modeled the construction emissions in the project. However, the construction emissions were modeled based on project-specific information that was supplied to our consultant team from the developer applicant team, who are very familiar with the duration of some of these processes in terms of construction operations and actually them supplying that project-specific information helped our analysis become even more accurate in the modeling. And that was what we responded to initially in the, in the final EIR, which included a response to their comments during the draft EIR period. This comment letter seems to just continue to disagree with that approach, but staff and our consultant team stands with our approach and our EIR and that it was adequate and resulted in appropriate level of impact or accurate level of impacts.
Okay, thank you. I was confident that you had done due diligence on that, but since it was arrived so recently, I just wanted to see what we had worked on earlier during the EIR timeline. The other thing, I just wanted to compliment the Planning Commission for their review of this. I think they did a nice job. I always look forward to reading their comments that we get and the due diligence that they go through in terms of making sure that everything fits what they care about. I would also commend you on the bike route of the three choices. I can't ima, I frequently ride that bike ride over there and I can't imagine option one or two would be pretty risky for a bicyclist. So I appreciate option three. It's expensive. I realize that, but it's certainly the most safe, providing safety to those that want to bike that area and connect with the Iron Horse Trail and so on. So I appreciate that as well. And I know that the Planning Commission has some avid cyclists on it as well and I'm sure they have their own particular point of view. So again, thanks very much for the report. Thanks for commenting on this particular item that I brought up and I appreciate the report. Thanks.
Well, very good. Again, thank you very much for the in-depth analysis. I greatly appreciate that. I noted the comments from some of the commenters about some disagreement about the birds of prey, birds of conservation concern and species of special concern. Certainly appreciate the staff comments to that, the staff response in respect to the protection of the riparian habitat, which I think was important to a lot of folks and that to amplify a little bit of what Councilmember Brandon mentioned, the noise impacts and the, what we would have if this building, these buildings didn't go in, it'd be a quarry. We're talking about two years of construction versus 30 years of quarrying. And again, you talk about dust and noise and vehicle emissions. On balance, it'd be much, much greater impacts of that. There was some disagreement about the avian breeding system or avian breeding season. So just make sure that's corrected in the final document and that with that, I think everything else has been, oh, the, they talked about habitat fragmentation, that that was, had happened over the years. And that was something that struck me because in the last conversation that we had, we were talking about buying lands east of Livermore just to create wildlife corridors. So we didn't have that fragmentation. So it shows that we're anticipating these for future development as well so that we can preserve these lands, preserve the habitat, so we don't have fragmentation like we're dealing with on this site. So again, on balance, great, great information, great comments. And with that, if there's no further discussion, I'd be willing to entertain a motion.
I'll move staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Carling, seconded by Councilmember Kik. Is there any discussion on the motion? And to Evan, to Councilmember Brandon and Barrientos' comments about a conversation with the carpenters' union, with that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. With that, moving on to item seven, matters initiated and report out. Councilmember Barrientos, we'll take it from your side this time.
Well, I attended Eva Board Directors Meeting and we had two long closed sessions, which tends to make it difficult for us to leave our parking area. And then I also was invited by the Hong Kong, what, Film Festival? I guess we all were. I took them up on it and I went up to Sonoma with my wife and she enjoyed, we enjoyed one or the two movies. And anything we were disappointed with is the reception. Instead of Chinese cuisine, we had chips and hummus and wine from Napa. I did get to meet the mayor of Napa and they were also concerned about affordable housing and things like that too.
I agree. Thank you. Councilmember Brandon.
Sure. So not too much to add on top of the items that are in the report out. I just wanted to kind of reiterate from I was at the CalCity's Housing and Economic Development Policy Committee and there are a lot of laws currently in the legislation. We did have our ledge packet today also. But there are a lot of things that will be affecting us very directly that are currently on the floor. So I know we are tracking those and keeping an eye on what they mean. And I'm interested to see how this goes, but it'll be, it's going to be a busy year for staff. So thank you for all you do. Keep up the hard work. And then the mayor may speak about this also. The two of us were, attended the Young Men's Service League and got to speak about what the city does. It was a class of freshman students from Livermore. It was wonderful speaking to them. They were very polite. They're taller than any of the freshmen I hang out with. It was, but it was very nice getting to talk to them, build them in on what the city does, giving them a tour of the council chambers and really just seeing a very engaged young group of men.
Councilmember Kik.
I have no official action to report. However, we had our committee members today and I'm really excited to see, although I may have had a different opinion earlier, the new beautification committee has a bunch of really smart people on there and I'm excited to see them support our Public Works Department. A lot of environmentally well-educated folks on how we can use green space use to support our climate action goals. So I look forward to seeing what they do there. And there was something else, but clearly it wasn't that important because I forgot. So moving on.
All right, very good. Vice Mayor Carling.
Thank you. I, just a couple of things that I think was interesting over the last couple of weeks. And the board chair for Lavma, the Livermore.
Amater Valley Water Management.
Amater Valley Water Management Agency. You can see why I was asking about INSP earlier because I can't even remember the ones I, anyway, the general manager. So if you want to know what Lavma is, the water, wastewater from Livermore gets pumped over to Pleasanton. Pleasanton wastewater gets pumped there and then the Dublin-San Ramon Sanitary District also ends up there. And then they pump all of that over the hill to San Leander and then into the bay, clean water by that time. Anyway, the general manager is retiring and so I was, Mayor and I interviewed some very good candidates last week and our responsibility to select a new general manager that will lead that agency. And I think we made a good selection. It remains, I guess, up to the attorney with that particular organization to negotiate a contract with that individual. But anyway, the point of all that is that beyond just the meetings that we sometimes go to, we also have the responsibility of selecting individuals that will then lead that organization beyond even my tenure on the Lavma board. So it's an important position and some of the responsibilities that we all have apart from our own council responsibilities that you see on Monday nights twice a month. As I mentioned earlier, I did enjoy Meals on Wheels last week. Again, that was, it's very, very meaningful and if, I don't know whether I mentioned this earlier, but there are nine routes in Livermore. And so people go out, as Kerry mentioned, five days a week with meals. And it's no wonder they need so many volunteers because they have a great organization that's well-run. But please, if you have the time or financial resources to help them out, please do if you have a chance. The only other thing I was going to mention was the Tri-Valley Energy Summit that I attended. Innovation Tri-Valley sponsored it. It was over at Ruby Hills Winery there off of Isabel. And there was a panel on hydrogen and it was very interesting. I think that's, you know, Fuel for the Future and Fuel Cells and there was representatives from a local company that's actually out at I-Gate proposing to build hydrogen-fueled aircraft. There was an individual that used to work for me at Sandia on the panel on hydrogen. So I got to renew an acquaintance with him, but it was really quite interesting and I think that it shows the kind of technology that this community is behind in terms of addressing climate change. So again, I appreciate what ITV does and bringing the community together. Must have been a couple of hundred people there, I suppose, right? Whoever was there. I know Brandon was there, Mayor was there. But anyway, that was, it was a good crowd. And again, I think points out what, what we're trying to do in the, in the Tri-Valley and in Livermore to advance clean energy and being responsible stewards for the environment. So thank you.
And by the way, you were a founding member of Innovation Tri-Valley. You were a founding board member. So.
Yeah, that's true.
It's, look at the great things.
And I-Gate as well.
Yeah.
With Brandon.
That's right. Yeah, so it shows how long I've been around. This is the third general manager for Lavma that I've hired.
Yes, okay.
The third interview series that I've done for Lavma. And again, great, very, very highly talented people. Just a couple of highlights. The Livermore Valley Arts had a reception at the Bankhead Theater featuring the Shigal Windows. There are 12 Shigal Windows that are at a medical center in Jerusalem. They're spectacular. There are a series of prints that are on display at the Bankhead Theater in the lobby. We also had a Livermore Rotary International Student Program here at the Mendon Hall Room where we had students from all over the world had come to Livermore to learn how local government works. The, there was an Livermore Art Association reception for the Essential Figure Art Show and that was another local artists that are working in the figurative space. So that's, we've got an extraordinarily talented community here and it's very gratifying to be working in that space. I also attended an Eagle Scout Court of Honor for Sebastian Mena, who's in the 10th grade. And normally they hang on until like 18 years old and they, they just get under the wire. Sebastian Mena and Xavier Thorpe both made their Eagle Scouts and of course, the vice mayor is an Eagle Scout as well. So we sort of, oh, very good, very good, Paul. So sometimes we risk wrestle to see who gets to go to these Courts of Honors. So certainly appreciate and recognize the great work that, setting a goal and then achieving it. As far as matters initiated, I remember it was like four years ago, I worked to get into the CIP. It took me eight years to get the Holmes Wall fixed. Just to, well, but at least I got, you know, I got the first, the part where it was falling down. We got that done. But that was eight years, but because of neighborhood opposition and litigation. So I figured we'll get started early on this. What I'd like to do is to start the process. As I said, I put it into the CIP four years ago to start working on replacing the Grape Steak Fence. And I drive by it every day and between El Caminito and Catalina, it's looking pretty sad. So if we could get that, if I can get the consensus from the council here to start working on that, can I get, can I get a few head nods? Okay, I got it. Thanks. Well, we put it in there four years ago, but it's just a matter of getting the plan together to make, we started putting funding in there. We just didn't have it, we don't have a plan yet. So I think I got five nods up here. So we could start that process and maybe it wouldn't be eight years until we see some replacement. So great. Okay, excellent. Thank you. All right. Well, in that case, I believe we have, there's a special meeting on April 1st. Okay, we don't.
No, Mr. Mayor, we do not have a special meeting. Our next meeting will be on April 15th, but the April 1st special meeting has not been canceled yet.
Okay, very good. It was in, it was in my notes and I just thought I'd check and make sure. So with that, our next meeting is April 15th. And with that.
April 15th, this year, we adopted a calendar this year that's a little bit different to recognize conflicts with holidays. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Okay, so April 15th, we'll see you back here. And with that, meeting adjourned. Thank you.